President.
President.
Hoskins.
Here.
Mandelbaum.
President.
Taylor. Mr. President Pro Tem, we do have a quorum with excuse Council President Taylor and Councilman Frazier.
Thank you. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is communications, and the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Greg Keeler.
I would just like to talk about the Jazz Festival we had this weekend here on the city grounds. It was a wonderful evening, two days event, and it was wonderful to see at the end of the show both the mayor, both police chief and fire chief up on the stage dancing. That's the first time I've ever went to any city where you've seen anything like that. And I know at one point in time when I looked around and when people were entering into the parking lot, the mayor was over there, and I wasn't quite sure if the mayor was over there collecting money, so it looked like the mayor was working all aspects of this event and doing a very good job. And I know a couple of friends that were here with me, they were surprised when I said that was the mayor over there. And he was like, "What?" But it looked more like it was his event, it looked like it was a whole family affair event. It was nice to see even the police officers and everybody else interacting with all the people and everything else, and it seemed just like we were one big happy community. Thank you.
Greg, I don't know if I would call it dancing, but...
You were moving.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Wendell Gramlich.
Hello, my name is Wendell Gramlich. I'm the Southfield TPOAM president. Since 2005, we've received a total of 20.5% raises, in raises. According to the Social Security cost of living adjustments for the same period, it was 43.5%. So, we're behind 23%. When the 2008 recession hit, we cooperated and helped by taking a 3% hit in pay diverted to the pension system with the hope that when the city was doing better, they would catch us up back, they would catch us back up. We went seven years without raises. When you think about it, how the city is having problems hiring and keeping employees, they're now trying to fix the wage gap with a hiring bonus. This will only keep new hires until they get their bonus, and then they'll leave us for other cities and employers that pay fair and competitive wages. When I hired in 2002, the benefits were good, and the healthcare was included. Sorry, excuse me. Since then, we're paying over 9% of our base wages for less than, or for less of a coverage than we had in 2005. On April 21st this year, we requested to start bargaining our contract that was expiring on June 30th. The reply we received was the city was not ready and would offer dates closer to June 30th. On August 4th, we had our first negotiations, and we met with the city, and they were still not ready. They didn't have an offer, they didn't present an offer. And they were not interested in seeing what we had drawn up. The city stated that they would have a proposal for us by the end of August, and after talking to another group that they were told they'd have a proposal on Friday, they still haven't received it either. So, I doubt that we'll receive an offer by the end of August, but I can be hopeful that we will receive one. Hopefully, it's a competitive and fair increase. To this time, to catch us up to a fair and competitive wage. And on a side note, the city has had the wage study, the wage study for months, and I offer, or I'd like to ask a question of when do you see it being released to the public? Thank you.
It's been the city's policy that's...
I understand.
...to the public, but we'll have our city administrator answer your questions on time during the normal process.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Fred Bunker. Is Mr. Bunker here? Next we have Mr. Chris Cleveland.
I did it all day, I'm just getting... Good evening, Councilman Mandelbaum. I'm Chris Cleveland, an employee of the city of Southfield. On June 30th, the TPOAM collective bargaining agreement expired. On July 19th, the city reached out for the first time and offered to meet on August 4th. On August 4th, the city came to the meeting with no offer or information to share. I want to share with you some of the ramifications of the expiration of our bargaining agreement. Currently, Michigan law requires that, number one, after the expiration date of a collective bargaining contract, and until a successor agreement is in place, public employees are required to pay any increase in health insurance costs until a new agreement is in force and effect. Number two, step increases cannot be given after the expiration of a collective bargaining contract, nor can lane changes or any increases related to academic achievements. Three, the employer is authorized to make payroll deductions to pay for any such increased cost in maintaining those benefits. Four, the statute specifies that the parties to a collective bargaining contract are not allowed to agree, and an arbitration panel is not permitted to order any retroactive wage or benefit level or amounts that are greater than those in effect after the contract expired. Five, expiration date is specifically defined as a date set forth in the agreement and must exclude any agreement of the parties to extend or honor the collective bargaining contract pending negotiations. I have been a public employee for nearly 30 years. The trend for decades is less people doing more work and taking concessions in the form of furloughs, pay cuts, benefit and pension reductions, and the increased cost of these falling on the backs of workers. A Pew Research study published in February of 2022 states that government wage growth lacks the private sector employees performing the same jobs by the largest margin on record. I appreciate the job that council has and the financial responsibility, but we work hard to maintain Southfield services and the strength of this community. Bargaining is not supposed to be a one side wins and one side loses situation. Bargaining means that two sides come together and agree to a contract that is good for everyone. Please move forward rewarding dedicated employees for doing their job. And I have a copy of the Pew Research study if you'd like it.
You can give it to the clerk and she can send it over. And I apologize, my mic was turned off before, but the same response, the city won't engage in negotiations in a public setting, but we will, we have tasked our city administrator and HR director to work with our unions through the proper channels. Next we have Paulette Nolan.
Hello. As you said, my name is Paulette Nolan. I'm with the Civic 300 Democracy for All Group. We are a nonpartisan group. We conduct nonpartisan voter registration and education. We're reaching out to you today to help Oakland County and get the unregistered citizens registered. I'm hoping that the council would be willing, a willing partner with us to allow us to conduct as needed with events and organizations. We have a goal of registering 3,000 persons. As of date, we've only registered 300 non-registered people, with a very small window to reach that goal. Any help or consideration you can give us will be greatly appreciated, and I do thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. And I know that our city clerk also makes it a point to try to get as many people registered as possible. All right, next is Mr. Joe Person.
Mayor Pro Tem, mayor, city council, city clerk. I'm here, I'm the chair of the Southfield Lethery Village Democratic, let me back up. Ms. Nolan, get in touch with me, like I already have talked to you. We're gonna do some things because we want to register some folks to vote too. But anyway, we had an election in 2021, and the results were that Councilman Mandelbaum, you got 8,080 votes, and Charles Hicks got 7,920. He is our chair of our Southfield Lethery Village Democrat, our treasurer. He's our treasurer. And we know, we're gonna make sure that Jason Hoskins, you going uptown to Lansing, we're gonna make sure that you go there. So, we looking at the next man up. And the next man up, the only person that this club will accept is Charles Hicks. He's been there, he's done that, and while you're doing the legislative committee, I think we need to come in and address another aspect that we have. You should not have to step down to run for the mayor, the mayor's seat. I'm sorry. And when you tell me that you're gonna put a person in because it needs to have stability, okay, my thought process is every other city around here, people are stepping down, they're running for mayor, or they're running for other elected offices, and they lose, they go right back to that job. To have to step down just to run makes no sense to me. So, give that some consideration, because here's the thing, if not, I got a club behind me that said, "Madam, Madam City Clerk, let us know what the numbers are, and we're gonna go get the signatures that we need to put that on the ballot." The other thing is, Madam City Attorney, we want an appointment with, I want an appointment with you so we can sit down and get this show started early instead of waiting. And I know that this doesn't actually happen until January, we're fine with that, we're just making sure that it's on the table now, so that gives y'all something to think about, because we're not gonna accept people put in applications, or we're gonna go back and get somebody that had a shot at the title of being on the city council, now they want to come back. You lost, your time is gone, it's a new generation, Charles Hicks won, and that's the only person that we will accept. And an election year is coming up. A lot of y'all made promises and said, not so much about that issue, about the primary balloting. We brought that back. This is some, another issue that we really need to deal with to make sure that you don't have to step down when you run for the mayor or any other city, you know, job, or any other election, whether state legislator, US Congress, or anything. Y'all have a good day.
Great, thank you. Is, did Mr. Fred Bunker arrive? Is he here? Okay. Thank you, that will end communications. The next is appointments. We have an appointment of James Warren for code enforcement officer as a city constable.
Hey, hello, council. My name is Donovan Fan, I'm supervisor for code enforcement department. Here I have our new code officer, James Warren, here with me. I'll tell you a little bit about him. He's our new code enforcement officer. He's been conducting inspections out in the field since April of this year. Mr. Warren has properly been trained by me, the department supervisor, our director, Therese Beeks, and other code enforcement staff. With over 20 years of experience as a former police officer, Mr. Warren has established great communication skills with the community and community leaders. He's also familiar with the court system and preparing, preparing and maintaining documents and records for the department. Finally, prior to becoming a police officer, he worked briefly at our John Gray Center, one of his communities that he patrolled on a daily basis. As a city council, I'm sorry, as a city constable, Mr. Warren proposes as power of, let me do that again, I'm sorry. Mr. Warren proposes the power and authority to write tickets and enforce our city ordinances.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Brightwell?
Um, April 11th is when he started. He started early this year.
President Pro Tem?
Councilman Cruz?
I'd like to move the appointment of James Warren to code enforcement officer as city constable.
Support? It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to appoint James Warren, code enforcement officer as a city constable. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Just raise your right hand for me. I do solemn swear affirm that I would support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Southfield, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of city constable to the best of my ability.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Warren, would you like to say anything?
Just look forward to working with everybody, and thank you very much. It's nice coming back to the city. It's been 23 years since I've worked with you guys, so...
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, welcome.
All right, next we have four sets of minutes.
I'm President Pro Tem. I would like to move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of June 13th, 2022, June 21st, 2002, regular minutes, regular minutes of June 27th, 2022, and special meeting minutes of June 28th, 2022.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 13th, the regular meeting minutes of June 21st, the regular meeting minutes of June 27th, and the special meeting minutes of June 28th, all in 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have ordinances.
Y'all gonna make me do all the work today?
Go for it.
I moved, Mr. President Pro Tem, I moved that we enact ordinance number 1755, rezoning request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Banks, to enact ordinance number 1755 of the rezoning request of Kiwi Hospitality Detroit LLC. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I would also like to move that we enact ordinance 1756, the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Banks, to enact ordinance number 1756, a council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next we have item, agenda items for discussion in our action. First is a presentation and discussion regarding the site plan review of Yukon Development to convert an existing five-story hotel to an assisted living and memory care facility.
Yes. Good evening, council, mayor administration. This particular item has actually been before you before, at least from the standpoint of the property in question. This is the Best Western Premier Hotel property. It's the circular hotel that's on Telegraph Road, west side of Telegraph, just south of M10 and the Lodge Freeway. Property located at 26620 Franklin Road. Council did approve the rezoning of this particular portion of this property last month to OS Office Service, and now the petitioner is here this evening in order to make a presentation on the conversion of the existing five-story hotel to an assisted living and a memory care facility. Originally, when this came before council a few years ago, it was actually going to be a La Quinta Hotel, but because of market changes, the petitioner has decided, because of market analysis, to look at a conversion to an assisted living and memory care facility instead of a hotel. So, this is a closer image of the property. The area in yellow is the building in question. Again, it is an existing building already on the property. Existing conditions of the building. As I had noted, property is owned to OS Office Service, which does allow for assisted living type facilities. This is the proposed site plan. The existing building is actually going to have a one-story addition of about 4,500 square feet on the west hand, on the west side of it. It would house both a kitchen and then a dining room area for the potential residence of the facility itself. There's significant upgrade in landscaping on the property. There will also be a drop-off area for patrons and patients on the south side of the building, so there would actually be a brand-new entrance to the site. There'll also be additional upgrades to landscaping on the property itself above and beyond, just around the building. These are proposed elevations. This is the first floor plan. Again, as I had noted on the left-hand side of the image, that is a brand-new addition with the dining facility as well as the kitchen, and then the first floor and the makeup of the rooms. Second and third floor plans, fourth and fifth floor plans. They also have on each floor various activities and dining areas, so each floor would have an area for activity. And with that, the petitioner is here this evening, Mr. David Dowling. Also with Mr. Dowling is the potential operator of the facility, and will give them an opportunity to explain their project and answer any questions.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, humble chairman, members of the city council. Thank you for hearing us with proposed site plan review for the memory care facility. My name is David Dowling. I'm the owner of Yukon Building and Land Development. We are seeking site plan approval for an 85-bed senior assisted living memory care facility. Senior residence is located off 26620 Franklin Road. The existing five-story property is a part of the Best Western Premier, a 206-unit, 16-story tower located at 26555 Telegraph Road, finished and occupied in 2017, also put online. The same facility in 2020 was a 54-unit Best Western Executive stay. The entrance of the property is off Franklin Road. The building entrance is off the south side, as Jeff had explained. The building will be 100% independent of all properties on site. Each room is private, fully handicapped bath. The five-story building will have a new 5,000-square-foot, 75-seat dining, fully-equipped kitchen to provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner. The kitchen and dining are attached directly to the existing five-story. There are areas on each floor that the client is, that is more restricted. They have accommodations for eating and lounging. The exterior area, the garden area, will be open to the visiting guests and residents. This is a secured space fenced, restricting others from entering the property and residents able to wander off. At this time, I'm willing to take any questions you may have on the site plan.
Counsel? Do you have any questions? Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah. I don't necessarily have a question about the site plan. And I don't think I asked this before, but I know it's, Mr. Spence, once this is up and running, and I'm for this particular project, by the way, this will go back on the tax roll, fully, fully taxed as, I know it's probably on the tax roll now. So, do you have an idea what the additional taxes will be?
No, sir, I don't have that information for you offhand. We can make that available in a couple of weeks when this comes back to court.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it, this is a, I think a win-win, but I'm just, one of those type, one of those type questions.
Question to me?
No, no, that was a statement, don't worry about it.
And, no, any other council members? And I think you've answered this previously, this will be completely separate from the other, the other hotels, correct?
Yes, it's completely separate from the other property.
By offense?
It's on the same land site, but it's not at all connected to Best Western Premier. It's operated independently.
Right, and the park, will they share parking lots, or will there be like a fence between the...
The parking lot in the entire site is a common element to the condominium, which is condominium one, which is the tower and the 54-unit, and also the support facility, the restaurant, on and on, and then the other side of it, which is the memory care. They all share the parking. There's some limited parking in the front of the building, but most of it, like I said, is all common element.
Okay. Councilman Banks?
The, the shorter hotel, I forgot, what was the name of that one?
That's a Executive Suites Hotel for the Best Western Premier.
Okay, so what is the occupancy rate approximately? Okay, so what is the occupancy rate approximately of that every week, do you know?
Last I heard, about a hundred percent. They, they actually have leased out the space to a couple of, of construction companies that have leased some of the space. The, I think the building is at eighty or ninety percent. Some of the rooms aren't occupiable right now, they have some staff in some of the rooms that are moving, but other than that, I think it's pretty well occupied.
Okay, thank you.
All right. One last question about the, the parking lot. There will, is, will there be a way to, so hotel patrons don't know to park by that building, or does that, is there enough parking spaces for everything?
Excuse me, you want to comment on the parking?
One of the things that's interesting about this particular downtown building is the residents, for the most part, are not allowed to carry cars.
My name is Marty Saltz, and I would be operating the building. I own a similar, similarly operated building currently in Royal Oak. So the residents, for the most part, do not have any cars, so it's completely occupied with, you know, there's staff cars parked on the property, but no resident cars. So there's, you know, eighty-five rooms and no cars allotted to those residents.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, through the chair?
Yes.
Again, it was just for discussion this evening. This will come back before the council on the twenty-ninth for a final review.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks. Next on the agenda is the authorization to award a contract to OHM Advisors for professional design and engineering services for the Carpenter Lake Improvement Project.
Good evening, Council. Parks and Recreation is seeking authorization to award contract to OHM Advisors for the professional design and engineering services for Carpenter Lake Improvement Project. Just as a reminder, back in February, council authorized the receipt of a grant from the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corps, in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars. This grant is for the city of Southfield to expand and improve the parking lot and install a programming shelter, as well as restrooms, at the Carpenter Lake Nature Center. Our city entered an agreement with MEDC and is expected to complete the construction by September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. OHM Advisors, just as a little bit of history, OHM Advisors assisted us during the application process by generating some opinions of probable cost and outlining the scope of the items. With the successful award of the grant, which we received, we would like OHM to, OHM Advisors to lead the design and engineering of the improvements to the park. The scope of their services will include a project kickoff, reviewing scope and schedule, site survey, preliminary design and engineering, site plan approval, final design and engineering, and bidding assistance with this project. The total costs are not expect, expected to exceed fifty thousand dollars. The timing of this would be if we received approval, this week, we would have, give them a notice to proceed. They would meet with us on the twenty-second, the week of the twenty-second of August, and have a project kickoff where they meet with our staff, talking about the scope of the work. August, October seventh, they would submit preliminary documents for site plan approval. And then the week of November fourteenth, we would receive site plan approval, and then by February third, we'd have final construction documents. And so we would look at starting this in the spring, and then with the completion date of September of two thousand twenty-three. So we are asking council approval for the expenditure of fifty thousand dollars for OHM Advisor Services for engineering for the Carpenter Lake Project. And I can answer any questions, and Chris Riggert is here with OHM Advisors as well.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. So just quick question, so as you're doing the construction on the park next year, if it's approved, will, will the park still be accessible?
That will be in question. I think that we probably will have some discussion with OHM. We don't, most of the time when we have construction projects going on, we close the park. We've got equipment, there could be staging of each of the components, so there could be some folks that are able to come into the park, as long as we don't have equipment or any kind of scenarios of unsafe conditions. So as long as we can keep folks safe when they enter, we would keep it open, but likely that it would be closed for a period of time.
Okay.
But we will let folks know ahead of time, through our social media, through our city website, and our Parks and Recreation website. So we'll have a schedule of that going forward.
All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Could you explain, what is a project kickoff?
That's when OHM comes and talks to our team, our city. So what we would do is talk about the project itself, the expectations for the project, speaking through the, walking through the planning process and going to the planning committee, and looking at a more refined timeline, so that we meet all of our scheduled completion dates, so that we can meet that September two thousand twenty-three. So it's a meeting of the minds between OHM Advisors and our city employees. You're welcome.
Any other questions from council? Okay.
Yeah, I think I do. Not to get in the way of this project in particular, but I'm, I am curious as to OHM and their diversity practices, not their practices, but where they are within their organization, because, you know, I mean, I know we selected them to do this, this work here, but they do a lot of work for us a lot of times, and I just want to be sure that, you know, people working in our community are making sure that, you know, our residents, all people of different backgrounds are all getting a chance to be a part of the development that's take, that takes place here all the time. So I'm not picking on you, Terry, or nothing like that.
Oh, I understand.
You know that, I'm not, I'm not gonna stand in front of this.
Right.
I just wanted to make that statement, really, and if, see if we could potentially at some point get that information from them.
I hear you.
So I guess I'm really talking to council, if you all are behind me on that, you know, you think we can, you know, start asking for something like that moving forward?
I hear your messaging as well, so.
Okay. I mean, we could talk about it further at another time, you know, I, I just want to get, get the ball rolling, so, but otherwise, project looks fine to me.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I would like to move that we approve this recommendation for the contract to authorize the fifty thousand dollars with OHM of Livonia for professional design and engineering services.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the authorization to award the contract to OHM Advisors for professional design and engineering services for the Carpenter Lake Improvement Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the authorization to expand our asphalt maintenance contract for the tennis courts and Park Services parking lot.
That would be me as well. Hello again, council. I have with me here tonight Steve Griffiths, who is our park superintendent for Parks and Recreation. We're here tonight, and you do have some handouts at your chairs that give you an idea of the parks parking lot that we're going, the park maintenance parking lot that we're going to be talking about, some pictures of that, as well as the diagram of improvements that we're looking at making. So we are seeking to expand the annual asphalt maintenance contract for the improvements of Civic Center tennis courts and Park Services parking lot. A little bit of background, we always strive to maintain and improve our grounds and facilities under our management of Parks and Recreation, two areas that have been identified and need immediate attention. And both of these are in our capital improvement plans, as well as budget. Civic Center tennis courts and the Park Services building parking lot. In order to address both areas, Parks and Recreation contacted OHM Advisors and Allied Construction to identify the most cost-effective solution for both areas. Allied Construction of Clarkston is the city's present asphalt vendor and has extended, extensive expertise in construction and recreation play services, and parking lot repairs and reconstruction. Allied Construction is currently finishing construction at both Miller and Sims Park. Parks and Recreation would like to expand the city's authorized contract with Allied Construction for asphalt repair, for the proposed improvements for both of these projects. Both projects quoted here, quoted prices take advantage of the competitively bid unit pricing previously approved by the council in twenty-one. The Civic Center tennis courts, I'll start with that. They have multiple cracks. We have had several injuries reported, and it is a safety issue. The cost to completely remove and rebuild that square footage, which is close to fifty thousand square feet of tennis court area, is close to nine hundred thousand dollars. However, an alternate, alternative is to repair the existing tennis, tennis courts with two-inch asphalt overlay that will extend their useful life up to twelve years. Parks and Recreation Department is recommending the alternate repair and is requesting that Allied Construction be retained to make the repair by expanding the city's present annual asphalt maintenance contract. The estimated cost for just the tennis courts here, I'm separating this out, the estimated cost for the Civic Center tennis court resurfacing is four hundred and three thousand dollars, one hundred and thirty, plus we've added a fifteen percent project management with contingencies. This project would be completed in the spring of twenty-three. We actually had conversations with them on the schedule and wanted to try and do it in the fall, so that we could start the project and then complete it in spring, but with the very sketchy weather, it really does take a risk, and so we're proposing that this would start in the spring, with the completion of early summer. So the second part of this contract would be the Park Services building parking lot. It's, it's in extremely poor condition and is a safety concern. We are recommending that we replace approximately thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty square feet of existing asphalt in the parking lot for a cost of three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-eight, two hundred, plus that fifteen percent project management. I've got some pictures of a diagram there for you. There's a diagram of the improvements, and I'd like Steve just quickly to walk you through that, and there's some existing pictures there that show you what we're talking about a little bit. But for this part of the presentation, our total contract extension would be for eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and thirty, and we are asking for that approval from council. And I'm gonna hand the microphone over to Steve, so he can walk you through that diagram of the park maintenance parking lot, which for your purview is behind the sports arena.
So if you look at the diagram of the city of Southfield's parking lot there, if you look in the yellow area, that is the proposed area to be repaid. In the blue area there, that is our concrete pad where dumpsters are sitting, and we have a grass area currently. We are planning on removing the three, see where the three stars are on the bottom? There are walls that hold our materials. We're gonna remove those and turn that area into a grass area. Reason why we're doing that is to save the city some money. We have a grading issue there, and we would have to increase the grade by four feet. And that also, if we did that, we're gonna have to redo the whole fence system and redo the whole grade, which is into the nature area behind us. If you look at some of our pictures, the first picture, you can see one of our bins there. The very top picture is our salt bin, all the black and residue on there. We drive through that every day, every time it rains. It's damaging all of our vehicles, all of our golf equipment, all of our trucks, which you all know is very expensive. The last three bins on the bottom of that same picture, we're gonna replace, actually remove completely. We're gonna save the top and move that over to the other bins, but the last three, we're gonna remove, that's the grass area I'm talking about. Now, if you look at the parking lot itself, it's pretty much looks like gravel, because it is. We spend probably two hours a week installing new crushed limestone in there, just for our safety. We can't walk on the parking lot without twisting our ankles, we're bottoming out our vehicles, we're destroying our golf equipment every time we go over these huge holes. Our blades get dull, it's a constant maintenance issue, needs to be addressed. Look at the last picture of the sewer cauldron, it's completely collapsed. That's probably a four-foot hole, deep hole in there that you're looking at, and it's probably three, three feet wide. That all needs to be repaired. The whole parking lot is in major distress. That's all I have. We need some help maintaining our equipment.
Can you, council, any questions? I do have, I'm sorry, do you have a question? I did have a question or two. You're taking out those walls with the?
The bins, storage.
The storage bins, but you have other ones that you can use?
Yes, we currently have another five or six that we are currently using. The last three, we don't use for anything, because they're actually swimming pools right now, they're holding water. The grade is not done properly, and through the years, it's just been destroyed.
Okay, and, and you mentioned the tennis courts will be done in the spring.
Correct.
Will that interfere with?
Spring play?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it will.
Do you know by how, how many weeks or so, or?
We can't guess, just because of that weather factor. We do have tennis courts over at Beachwoods that we can offer our tennis lessons on during that period of time. We hopefully won't be down for too long, but we will have to secure a path into the tennis courts. We'll probably trim up some trees so that they can get equipment in there. With this project, though, we don't have to remove fencing. That's a large part of the cost when you redo tennis courts completely, is you pull out all the fencing, and you have to drill core boars in all over again. For us, our fencing is in really great condition, and it just wasn't recommended going forward. So it will disrupt play, but we would rather have them done well and have a finite period of time, hopefully, and then be ready to go, hopefully by summer.
Okay, but the parking lot will be done in the fall?
Fall. Parking lot will be done this fall. For us, the Parks Crew is going to need a good two weeks to remove all of our equip, they're not thrilled about that part, but to remove all the equipment, we have been for the last year getting rid of, whether it's to auction or to the dump, getting rid of storage stuff that's back there. It is a space for, some of our city departments don't have room for parking or storing or, or moving things off of their areas. So we'll be doing that for the next two, two and a half weeks, if this is approved. The, the project itself will be completed in two weeks, once Allied comes in. Some work that we're going to do ahead of time, though, is we're going to be looking at the sewers and cleaning those, all of the catch basins, prior to Allied coming in for this project. So we've got a little bit of house cleaning to do in preparation, but we also have some cleaning to do as far as some of the infrastructure there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Clearly, these two projects need, need to be done. And I have a, I have a resident that calls me every year about the tennis court. And I think two years ago, you told me to just give him your number, he was calling me so much, and I gave him your number. But the, and obviously, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not, you know, but my number, my, my focus is pretty much on the dollars. Why is it costing more to do the tennis court, whereas to me, it looks like more work needs to be done in the, in the yard there? Is there a logical answer for that? I know, I know the engineer's not here, but it's just, it's fifty-five thousand dollars difference.
I think it's more of a finesse project in the tennis courts. They're doing a fine tuning on grinding the asphalt that's currently there and replacing it, whereas when they come to the parking lot itself, they're coming in there and just ripping everything out and starting over fresh. It's more of a fine tuning. It's more of a fine tuning application with the tennis courts.
More of a precision thing?
Yes, yes.
Than, than time consuming perhaps?
Yeah, this, almost the same amount of space. I mean, it's a lot of space for those tennis courts, but they're working within the framework of the fencing. So, they, they're not removing any of that. And once they grind down, they are repairing those cracks and then they put that two-inch overlay, and then they come in and they, and they line the court. So, it is very expertise, very precision, as Steve was saying, but it is working within some existing structure that we just can't afford to damage. So, it's a lot of space to cover.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'd like a motion.
Want to approve this? Okay, thank you. I recommend that the city council adopt a resolution to expand the annual asphalt and maintenance contract with Allied Construction of Clarkston, Michigan, to include improvements to the Civic Center tennis courts and also the Park Services parking lot.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the authorization to expand the annual asphalt maintenance contract for improvements of the Civic Center tennis courts and Park Services parking lot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have our authorization to purchase an asphalt hot box for Streets and Highway Division.
Thank you, council. I come before you asking for a special permission to buy a hot box, asphalt paver box. Normally, it would have been included in the budget for this year, but the significant damage to the equipment used by, by use wasn't discovered until late June, to the point where it made the hot box no longer usable. The hot box was originally purchased in twenty-fourteen. We normally operate with three hot boxes and that's used to carry the hot asphalt to any repair job all year round. So, getting eight years out of this hot box is pretty good. We are asking that the council approve the purchase for a total of nineteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents, and we are expecting a fifteen-hundred-dollar trade-in credit for, well, and we will buy it from the, I'm sorry, we, we will purchase it under the my bid procedure, and we're asking the city council for approval.
Okay, council, any questions?
Make a motion?
Councilwoman Banks?
Okay, I recommend that council authorize the purchase of the asphalt recycle, recycler and hot box trailer for Streets and Highways from Falcon Asphalt Equipment of Freeland, Michigan, in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents, after receiving the fifteen-hundred-dollar trade-in value of the old equipment.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the authorization to purchase the asphalt hot box for the Streets and Highway Division. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Water Leak Relief Program Annual Report.
Yes, according to Resolution twenty-eighteen point oh-six, the city council authorized a water leak relief program to its customers who have suffered major water leaks under the program. The city is willing to split the difference for a maximum of three months, where if somebody has, number one, noted there is a leak and has proven there's a leak, and even more importantly, has taken action to stop the leak, the city has waived half of those fees for three months. Under this program, a particular property can only receive this waiver once. So, it's not a repeating program. If you received it in twenty-eighteen, you're through for as long as you own the house. Last year, we had ninety-two customers who received the relief, eighty-three of those were residential and nine were commercial. The total relief granted in fiscal twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two was a hundred and five thousand, five hundred and, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-two cents, or an average of one thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars. The residential accounts received a reduction of seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven, and the commercial of thirty thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. There's no action needed, this is just being brought up as per the resolution, for the council's information and to be filed appropriately.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yeah, I, I just have one question.
Sure.
What was the nature of those businesses that, that were having problems with their water?
A lot of them were leaky faucets, leaky toilets, your standard, or a break in a line that they didn't know under a floor. There are a whole myriad of problems.
So, so we determined that these businesses could, did not have the ability to pay? That's what you're telling?
No, they actually, when the resolution was passed, it was not given a needs analysis. It was that if you had a, a leak, we felt out of fairness, you could have part of that waived.
Oh, okay, all right. And, and I assume this is going over quite well with our business community, that we, we saw they had a leak and we being, we're being a, a good city, we allow them?
Yeah, and I, I have to say, this is one of the few communities I've worked in where the business community isn't complaining about water rates, and they feel that the city is beyond generous with their programs.
Okay, well, that's, and it's, that's good to hear because it, it seemed like we are really doing businesses a favor for, for this type of thing.
Yeah, not every business is multi-million, billion-dollar business also, so it, every little bit helps.
Okay, well, this is a good selling point for our economic development people to indicate how nice we are, you know, to startups and other, you know, middle, middle, middle level businesses. Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome. Thank you, folks.
Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if there was ever any consideration for the one-year, I mean, the one-time only policy to maybe be changed, maybe once every ten years, as, as a house, you know, gets older, things might go wrong again a little later, we might wanna consider it? Or was that just, are we just thinking that once they get it right, then they should just take care of it from that point forward and make sure it doesn't happen again?
I unfortunately wasn't here when you, your council decided it. If you'd like to see us staff work with it, we have no problem in working with Attorney King and maybe possibly making some recommendations to you folks for further action in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this was a council resolution, so we could always, we can always change it.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Good.
That may be something that would have to go either through finance or legislative, I'm assuming.
Probably.
So, we'll add that to Councilman Hoskins' list of items.
Oh, we are.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Are we taking action on this?
To receive and file.
Oh. I'd, I'd like to move that we receive and file the, the Water Leak Relief Program Annual Report as presented.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to receive and file, and approve and file the Water Leak Relief Program Annual Report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have the proposed purchase of cable equipment.
In May, bids were requested for several pieces of broadcasting equipment and related equipment for Cable Fifteen. Only one bid was received, it was from Film Tools of Burbank, California. They do a lot of work for us in cable. Their bid was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. While purchasing was reviewing that bid, the cable team worked with tech services to review the equipment. We came up with a revised request for equipment. We feel at this time, we should only purchase two pieces of equipment, that being the character generator, which displays information at the bottom of the screen during live shows, and the slideshow hardware and software, which displays informational slides on a rotating system when nothing else is showing on cable. The combined cost of those, well, first of all, I should state that purchasing then went back and renegotiated for just those items with Film Tools, and they did an excellent job, actually. And then they investigated further, determined that there was no other way to get a better price than the thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars that was identified for these pieces of equipment. So, as this is the best price that's possible for these pieces, and these are the pieces that cable needs right now, we're requesting that you waive further bidding and allow us to purchase the character generator and the slideshow software and hardware for a total of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars from Film Tools of Burbank, California.
And this includes shipping and training of the equipment?
It includes shipping, training, installation, and for some of the equipment, extended warranties as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? Councilwoman Banks?
Is this bottom-line number correct? We're, we're talking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less, and am I reading this correct? The, that's for, because we're not purchasing five Apple computers?
Well, it's, it's not just the five Apple computers. We did identify that, for instance, a forty-seven hundred dollar Apple MacBook, we just don't need, we're not purchasing that. We're purchasing several Windows computers, four, to replace the four Macs. That saves some money. But a lot of it was also just equipment that was in the nice-to-have category, and we feel that at this time, that's not the time to purchase this equipment. If you recall, when Mr. Michaels gave his presentation, he talked about cable being budgeted to expend their fund balance. We don't want to purchase things that we're going to need in the future until we make sure that, what the future looks like.
No, Dan, thank you, I, I appreciate it, and that was good negotiating, I mean, from one fifty-seven down to thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty, that's a awfully big difference. Thank you.
Well, we will be purchasing, for instance, the, the Windows computers, four instead of five. There will be costs, but they will be less.
Right, no, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, I recommend that council authorizes the awarding of a contract to Film Tools without competitive bidding, as permitted under Ordinance, Ordinance Section Number one point two seven nine, for the purchase and installation of the Compex Character Generator and Cablecast Bulletin Board Hardware and Software, for a total price of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, which will include shipping and employee training in the use of the equipment.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the, the purchase of cable equipment as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the presentation by operators of marijuana establishments. We do have several operators, and I will call you up as it shows up on our agenda. The first we have is Mr. David Dallow from Southfield Cannabis Company, or Corporation. And you will have about five minutes to-
Sure, no problem.
-present.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Thank you, council members, for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight. As you are aware, right now, the city of Southfield is currently allowing only medical marijuana facilities. What we're here to discuss today is the opportunity or the possibility of the city adopting an adult-use ordinance to accommodate the existing licensees who have spent a ton of money, time, and energy in their different operations and their different licensed facilities that they've shown commitment to in the city of Southfield. In the big picture, all that, what's currently going on in the industry as a whole is, the medical marijuana industry is just dying. The numbers speak for themselves in terms of what's going on at the state level, what's going on at the local level, and where the industry is going with respect to, to the marijuana industry. There was a little write-up, a quick PowerPoint presentation I prepared, I know you received it late in the day, but I believe you all have a written copy of it. Just gonna give you some figures. Oh, one other thing, we're here from Southfield Cannabis Company, our facility is on Bridge Street, we're here for a cultivation facility. It's a Class C medical marijuana facility. We've been operating since approximately two thousand nineteen. I believe we were the first licensed facility to take that jump into the marijuana industry in, in Southfield, and, and we've been committed to the cause ever since then, despite the different issues that we face through, in the industry. Where the industry is going? So, I put together just a little graph that shows the decrease in the number of medical marijuana patients and the number of medical marijuana caregivers that have existed in the state of Michigan. And I just went back as recent as June twenty-twenty-one, just to give you an idea, which is when the adult-use industry really started to take off. In June of twenty-one, you had two hundred and fifty-two thousand patients and thirty, thirty thousand caregivers in the entire state of Michigan. So, for medical marijuana facilities, what that means is, in the entire state of Michigan, you're only looking at two hundred and eighty thousand approximate residents who are eligible to buy marijuana in the state of Michigan. Six months later, in December of twenty-twenty-one, we decreased to two hundred and thirty-seven thousand patients and twenty-eight thousand caregivers. In March of twenty-twenty-two, that number went down again to about two hundred and thirty thousand patients and only twenty-six thousand caregivers. And as recently as the Lara report that's, that gets published every month, we're down to only two hundred and ten thousand patients in the entire state of Michigan who are eligible to buy marijuana from a retail facility, and, you know, the cultivators cannot, can only provide those retail facilities on the medical side. Registered caregivers are down to twenty-four thousand. In total, the entire market that can be serviced at, from a consumer standpoint in the entire state is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, with only thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five of those residents residing in Oakland County. It's a very small, very small population of people that are eligible to buy at these facilities. And what we're looking to do here is introduce adult-use marijuana to give these licensees that have shown a commitment to the city, the opportunity to truly participate in the market. Now, from an operational perspective, I know there's not always a lot of clarity unless you're in the industry or, or you actively participate in the licensing side or as a licensee. So, I speak to you as both a licensee, and full disclosure, I'm a licensee myself, I have facilities, and as an attorney. I can tell you that there's almost, there is no difference in the way these two facilities operate. The only difference is, one can serve to anybody and sell to anybody who's the age of twenty-one and older, and the other one is eighteen and older, and those clients require a registered caregiver card or a registered patient card. That's the only difference. In terms of the actual marijuana that's sold in these facilities, the only difference that you'll find inside of a facility is, one has a blue tag for the recreational, one has the yellow tag for recre, for, for medical. They're, they're grown in the exact same way, they're grown with the exact same THC contents, they're grown in, in the exact same batches. The only difference is, the state gives you a blue tag for adult use and a yellow tag for medical. The other thing is, in terms of the security measures, I mean, these are the most secure facilities in the entire state. I know that there's always concerns about marijuana facilities and what type of criminal traffic they can bring. I can tell you from my own experience with four different licensed facilities and a cultivation facility, that the only time that we've had any cops or any type of legal issues onsite is when they're coming to us to utilize our camera systems to help them observe crimes that have taken place across the street, next door, driving on the, you know, on the road, different, different instances that had nothing to do with our particular facility. I know that's been a point of emphasis in the past, is, is the type of crime and things that these type of facilities attract, and I think even in your own city here. We haven't had a single incident that I'm aware of that was a criminal activity at one of these facilities. They're the most secure facilities they are, that exist, and we do our best to also have onsite security that provides just another added level of security. In terms of employees, that's just another slight difference. Employees in the adult-use facilities also have to be twenty-one years of age or older versus eighteen is the threshold for medical facilities. For the benefits piece, and I think this is something that should definitely, yes-
You have one minute left.
One minute, okay. So, benefits. Right now, the city of Southfield for the retail facilities is not earning a single dollar of the tax revenue that's shared at the state level. The only thing that they're getting is the five thousand dollar annual licensing fee. If they were given the opportunity to participate in the, in the adult-use field, each retail facility would entitle, last year's, last year's payout was fifty-six thousand dollars per facility. Now, the, the critical thing is, there's nothing preventing walled lake- Now, the critical thing is, there's nothing preventing Wald Lake, Hazel Park, Ferndale, or anybody else from delivering into the city of Southfield. That marijuana is still ending up here. Adult-use marijuana is in the city, whether it's permitted or not. One way or another, it's getting here. But the city's just not seeing any of the upside. And on top of it, these facilities that are operating right now are really not able to hire the 20 or 30 staff members that every facility will be able to bring in. These are jobs that are paying above a living wage, and they simply can't compete in the marketplace because they don't have the ability to participate in the adult-use market. So what we're asking here today is for the city to consider the opportunity to adopt an adult-use ordinance and give the existing licensees that have invested in the city the opportunity to participate with all the other licensees in the state on a level playing field. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, did you have any specific questions? We want to, I know we want to keep it brief, but any?
Can I have a specific question?
Yes. Councilwoman Banks?
Yeah, a specific question for this particular location only.
Sure.
This particular location is a grow center, correct?
Just a grow, correct.
So I'm a little confused when you said, you know, if this were approved, people could hire 20 to 30 people. And with this grow center, you're asking that in addition to growing for the medical marijuana, you want to grow for the recreational marijuana? Or are you suggesting they also sell recreational marijuana at the grow center?
So from a global perspective?
I'm just referring, I'm just referencing Southfield Cannabis only.
Correct. I'm answering, yeah. That's what I'm going to address. So from a global perspective, in the entire industry, currently, we're only allowed to grow medical marijuana. The impact that the current state of affairs has with a limited client sell for retail facilities to be able to buy medical marijuana is almost, you know, none. It's non-existent these days. We, as a grower, don't have the opportunity to wholesale to these other retail facilities that are focusing exclusively on adult use. For that reason, there's no, we can't hire the employees that we would need to produce adult use and be able to generate the revenues that we would be able to generate to sell to the adult-use retail facilities. That's what I'm getting at. Our particular facility probably wouldn't have 20 to 30. I guess what I'm getting at is, the retailers would be able to hire 20 to 30, is what I estimate based on what I know about them. We'd probably be able to add on another 10 to 15 staff members at our facility if we can cultivate adult-use marijuana, which we'd be able to actually wholesale. At this point, there's just not a market for our product because we're only allowed to grow medical.
And who would you wholesale it to?
To the retailers. These gentlemen that are standing behind me here, and likely will get up after me and give a speech.
Okay, so again, it sounds like we have two different scenarios in the city of Southfield. We have the retailers that sell directly from a store, and you're advocating for wholesale to sell recreational so they can sell to the retailers. Am I understanding that correctly?
You are, and they go hand in hand. And it's one ordinance at the end of the day. And what we're seeking to do, or seeking to achieve is have the city of Southfield adopt an ordinance that approves both cultivation and retail for adult-use purposes.
I guess I don't see them as, they're both the same, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, next, we will hear from Loom Cannabis.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Michael Dowdell. I'm the Vice President of Retail Operations for Loom Cannabis. I grew up here in Southfield, and my parents are still residents. My team dared me to wear my varsity jacket, but it didn't fit, so I chose not to. But I spoke to you all behalf of Loom in spring of this year. At that time, I shared with you that Loom was the number-one cannabis retailer in Michigan, and that we've created over 1,000 jobs, and we've created life-changing careers for hundreds of our employees. Our stores are very safe, they're very secure. We've had zero incidents in our 32 operational recreational stores. There's been no theft or crime due to excellent staff training, video surveillance, and security guards. We're really excited to be the first cannabis retailer to open in Southfield. And after hearing from myself and other members of the team, we were finally able to open on Thursday, March 10. We've demonstrated track record of trying to work with the city on this issue for over a year, getting the store open, and we were really excited to open. Standing with me is Ani, who was one of the luminaries, salespeople that worked at our store. We've been very collaborative with the city of Southfield. In fact, we sponsored the jazz concert this weekend, which myself, I was able to attend with my family. We're excited to open, and we were able to add 18 jobs with extremely good pay, benefits, to Southfield residents. And we began what we thought at the time would be long careers for each of them. We built a state-of-the-art, one-and-a-half-million-dollar building, if any of you have seen it. And although we opened as a medical location, we anticipated being allowed to add on adult-use sales soon. Unfortunately, that day never came. We knew the store would be slower than our typical adult-use location. However, with the collapse in wholesale cannabis prices, we had no idea how slow the store would actually be. Our store averaged about 30 customers a day on a good week. You just heard before, there's about 34,000 eligible medical members locally. So to put that into perspective, the average Loom store sees about 120 customers a day in the fall and winter, and up to 200 in the summer. The cannabis market has changed significantly since we first began our journey with the city of Southfield. Cannabis companies are scrambling to right-size their business, and despite being the largest operator in the state, Loom was also not immune. So after losing significant amounts of money in each month in Southfield since March, we had to make the tough decision to shutter the Southfield location. We were on pace to lose several hundred thousand dollars per year in that store as a medical-only facility. With our store being medical-only, many customers continue to visit our neighbors, including Ferndale, Hazel Park, Berkeley, et cetera. And those are cities have all opted in and are seeing the economic benefits. That includes the $56,000 a year that he talked about earlier. That number was $28,000 in 2020, $56,000 last year, and we expect it to be perhaps as high as $80,000 this year. That tax money is from increased property tax revenue, and it's an indirect benefit to other businesses from increased foot traffic, et cetera. So it's my understanding that the deadline for the excise taxes is September 30. At this point, the only way to get excise taxes in March of 2023 would be to allow the existing medical stores to sell adult-use cannabis now. So I'd like to introduce you to Ani Glass, who originally worked at our Wald Lake location. She transferred to Southfield with the hope of helping them become our number-one location. Telling Ani and the Southfield team that we had to close was one of the toughest things I ever had to do. She was one on the front line of helping our medical customers, and she's got a great smile and a great personality. And she had to tell hundreds of customers, probably thousands, that they could not serve them because we were adult-use only. So I'd like to allow Ani to speak about her experience.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity, first of all. Second of all, have any of you been in a retail cannabis location? If you haven't, I would love to take you to our Wald Lake location. That place can be recreational, adult-use. It is classy, it is established. It is not what you think of cannabis, first of all. Second of all, your citizens want this. They come in, they ask, I have to turn them away. I tell them, Ferndale can sell to them, but I can't do anything for you until Southfield approves it. It's not keeping cannabis out of the city. What it is doing is having your citizens go to another city and purchase there. Also, Loom is seed to sale. We are double-testing all of our products. You know that your community is going to buy something that is good quality. If they purchase off the black market or from someone else that's growing at home, you have no idea what you're purchasing. You're giving people in your community the ability to be susceptible to anything else. At least bring them something that you know is in good standards. Do you have any questions about the difference that I've seen between medical and recreational facility?
Councilwoman Brightwell?
You just brought up a question. I meant to ask the prior group, but from a production standpoint, how do you distinguish between medical and recreational? Is there something in the grow process you exclude, something, or are they the same?
Same, same product.
It's basically, you just label it. It's just co-tag. You put a blue label on it or a yellow tag on it. The product itself is the same.
It's the same product, it's just labeled differently?
Yes.
Okay, okay. There's nothing in the soil?
No.
Okay.
So thank you, Ani. And so just to close, I'd just like to reiterate, the city's going to continue to lose revenue to nearby communities if we don't opt in to recreational cannabis. All your neighbors are already much further along in terms of opting in and getting stores open. Opting in before September 30, it's going to lead to more than $50,000 in tax revenue per store each year, and it will increase foot traffic to local businesses. As I said before, it's doubled each year. My expectation, it'll be higher than the $56,000 that cities received last year or this year. By simply licensing the three existing medical providers for adult use, we can provide the local economy and the city budget extra revenue. Southfield's neighbors like Ferndale, Berkeley, and Royal Oak have already opted in. So we need your help, and I'd just like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk with you again today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone have any further questions for Loom?
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yeah, I don't want to beat this down, but just from a comparable standpoint, what do you anticipate? Excuse me?
That was someone else.
Oh, what do you anticipate, you know, difference in revenue from? And do you have a comparable in the United States or in Michigan that predicts, this is a predictable number?
Well, generally speaking, a store does, in our history, back when it was mostly medical, a store would do, you know, seven to eight times what they were doing before when they were medical only. So a store that was doing $2,000 a day would do $14,000 to $16,000 a day. But that's changed a bit as the market's gotten more mature. But we would do significantly better than what we were doing before, where we see 30 customers a day.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dreams Kanna.
Good evening. My name is Michael Lengness. Thanks for having us. Also, born and raised in the city of Southfield and spent my entire adult life working here. So it's so nice to be here before you, first time in my life, after 60 years of being around. So I'd like to introduce Paul Lufti and Tarik Gayar, who are the owners of Dreams Kanna, and are here with their concerns and hope that one day this city will move to a recreational standpoint. We appreciate the time that has been allocated us to discuss the issue before this council tonight related to the consideration of adopting recreational cannabis in the city of Southfield. Three years ago, when my clients were granted a medical provisioning license by the city, the economic environment in the state, great state, was very different. We had an emerging market shooting up the economic mountain. Access to products related to medical provisioning were easily accessible, and due to the early stages of this market, medical provisioning centers were sometimes the only game in town or even nearby. Since that time, the market has changed drastically. Recreational has taken over the market. Recreational provisioning centers offer easier access and opportunities to those in this space, both for the municipalities and the operators. We know that as a result of recreational's quick pace of development, it has made operating a medical provisioning center economically more difficult to operate. With REC nearby, med cards are not as necessary, and as a result, has driven the cost of the product down in the marketplace. But this has also resulted in significant changes in our supply chain, resulting in less available inventory for medical operators, both in flour and other secondary products like gummies, creams, et cetera. Further, Dreams turns away approximately 100 customers a day because potential customers do not have a medical card. In Colorado, for example, based upon the information produced by the Colorado Department of Revenue, medical cannabis is now accounting for approximately 13% of the total revenue generated. Recently, in April of this year, the Detroit News did an article discussing the surge in recreational cannabis that will lead to the demise of the 12-year-old medical cannabis sector. MJ Biz Daily, in February of 2022, wrote an article on how Michigan has now passed Colorado on revenue, and that the rapid growth has been driven by Michigan's recreational sales. While Michigan's recreational sales have doubled, medical sales have decreased as recreational has gained its foothold, and patients have left the medical program. Essentially, what the market is telling us is that there will be a smaller patient pool to draw from going forward, and the overall revenue from the medical segment will continue to contract, while the recreational segment will continue to grow and expand. We do not anticipate surrendering our medical license. We just want the opportunity to be able to expand our business by participating in the recreational marketplace. The city has already lost one cannabis location and the resulting tax revenue. We think it's time for reconsideration by the city related to allowing recreational cannabis. Based upon our research, it makes the most economic sense for everybody. It's a win-win. The city gets revenue, we get more customers. Everyone's happy. We want to thank you for your time, and we look forward to participating with the city in this process as you see fit and appropriate. Is there any questions for me or my clients?
Any questions from counsel? Nope. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We've heard the presentation, we've heard what the operators would like, and I would like to ask that our legislative committee look at this item and bring it back to the council with a recommendation of if we want to keep the current ordinance or if we want to change it or expand it to include recreational. Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we're in the council portion of the meeting. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I have a couple items that deal with our veterans community. Back in June of 2019, I made notice that the Veterans Administration was starting a registry for burn pit. The veterans who had been in Iraq, Vietnam, wherever the army had a burn pit. And just recently, last week, the US Senate and the US House of Representatives and President Biden signed a reauthorization for burn pit presumptive illnesses. And I'm going to encourage all our veterans, which I've encouraged since 2018, to get on the registry because a lot of diseases, all kinds of cancers and numerous other things, were a product of the burn pits. That's the way the army and all the military pretty much dispose of their waste in those countries, those foreign countries. So please register with your primary care individual at the VA hospital, which could be Dingle, Ann Arbor, or wherever you might have a relative. These messages that I give for veterans are pretty much for for the individuals who are listening to me to pass the word on because I know that a lot of individuals perhaps are not veterans, but you know someone that knows a veteran, or you might have a relative that might be a veteran. The next item, which I also brought up in a prior meeting, it dealt with, and this is another one that the VA is really pushing, it is veterans who are confronted with intimate partner violence. That's intimate partner violence. That's violence from your girlfriend, boyfriend, your husband or wife. And so the VA has a program with respect to, they can counsel you with respect to, if you're a veteran, how to deal with the intimate partner violence. And then, again, you can reach out to your local VA hospital, whether it be Ann Arbor, Dingle, Ann Arbor, they have regional veterans centers. I think they have one in Pontiac. But the main thing of it is, is that you should definitely reach out to the VA. They have numerous programs to handle all kinds of life issues for veterans. And although I gave a sketchy kind of overview of these items, historically, we produce flyers, and we put them in the package, in the box, right? right next to the neighborhood office here in our lobby. And/or you can just call me here at the city of Southfield, and I can give you more specific information. But the main thing of it is, reach out to your veterans' hospital and your veteran primary care to avail yourself to these benefits. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of put something on people's radar, just so they know and can be able to register early. And the city of Southfield is going to be holding our 2022 Walk to Raise Awareness of Domestic Violence. That is happening Sunday, October 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM here on the municipal campus. And I'm bringing it up now just because the first 500 people to register, they'll receive a free walkers' package, which includes a T-shirt and a wristband. The walk is approximately two-mile walk, begins and ends on the front lawn of the municipal campus here. This is obviously something we want to make sure that we're bringing more awareness to the city. We partner with Haven, which is an organization, a great organization, that helps people escape domestic and sexual violence. And so, I just want to make sure that people knew that that was happening. Also, of course, if you ever need any assistance, you can always reach out to the Southfield Police Department, and they will happily help you. You can also reach out to them to get more information about the walk and for registering. But that is all I have. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple real quick things. First of all, I just wanted to clarify a statement I made as related to OHM and diversity, just simply to say that that's not, I wasn't going against them. I'm talking about this with anybody that we do contract work with. That's something I would like to know more about before we make a decision on sometimes taking those contracts. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that that part was clear. Secondly, I just want to congratulate Parks and Recs on the jazz concerts this past weekend. And was it the week before? Was Straight Ahead was here? Well, I attended all of them. And they were all excellent. We had good weather. I don't know if Terry had anything to do with that part, but beyond that, the performances were excellent. And there were tons of people out, and I just, you know, really was good to see that. Got a chance to talk and meet new residents that I had not met yet. And in some of my conversations, I just wanted to mention this to the council too, that they were still asking about fireworks in the city. And so, I don't know that I have a really good answer why we can't do that again. So, I'm just going to put it on the table for council to think about and talk about, and maybe we can have something more we could do or possibly bring them back because personally, I would like to see them back as well. But it was a very safe environment. Police chief, deputy chief, and everybody were there. Of course, the mayor was there. He would have stopped anybody if they got out of line. But I really enjoyed it. So, it was really great. So, that's all I wanted to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. A few upcoming events that will be taking place in Southfield. On August 19th, the Parks and Recreation Department will be presenting the Summer Wind Down Concert. It will be held, I believe, on the front lawn on Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And then, on August 17th, the Southfield Library will host the 200th Jazz and Blues Concert. It will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, again, near the library. Bless them. And then, on Wednesday, August 24th, on the front lawn of the city, we will have our Senior Appreciation Evening, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to mention there were two initiatives that we had last week with our police and fire department. One was they hosted a college night where they gave out valuable information for parents and young adults who are specifically going away to college, different health and safety awareness tips and different things like that. I know Cable 15 was there, so hopefully that will be airing on the local cable station. It was a great event. And also, the following day, the Southfield Police Department and the Southfield Fire Department, along with Families Against Narcotics, relaunched Hope Not Handcuffs, where anyone who is suffering with a substance abuse problem can go to the police department or fire department and get help, no questions asked, and they will help you out in any way they see fit with specific plans in place. That takes us to our mayor's portion.
Okay. Good evening. As has been referenced, we had a great weekend here in the city of Southfield. Approximately 4,000 people attended the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival on Friday night. It was a gorgeous night. And we had some local talent with Randy Scott performing, longtime Southfield educator and obviously, great musician and resident. Former Southfield School employee Darrell Beebe performed as well. And Saturday night, the weather wasn't as nice, but we did have a good crowd, and the show that Kimmy Horn put on was absolutely tremendous. I want to offer, this is an effort, it's really a signature event for the city, and it takes a lot of hands to make something this big happen and happen safely. One of the things that we're very pleased with about having this jazz festival is we have a mature crowd. There are no incidents. The folks that come, it's very mellow. They're on the lawn, except for when somebody gets them on their feet and they're dancing. But it's really a joyous occasion. So, again, this is an effort that, between Kimmy Horn Productions, working with our legal department, city administration, Parks and Rec, Park Services, which was here till the wee hours of Saturday night, Sunday morning, the police department. We had a whole security plan developed by Justin Beck and Emergency Management, the fire department, John Amenathy, and Chief Barron, that put together this safety protocol. And then, of course, Public Works that helped with a number of the logistics, including the lights that come on the field when the performance ends in the evening. And overall, it was a great success and a great weekend for the city. Another great thing that happened, and this was on Sunday, I had the occasion to, I was invited to speak at the Torch of Wisdom Foundation. You may know that this is a sort of the sister organization to the Sigma Delta Theta Southfield Chapter. 10 years ago, in 2011, they bought a vacant office building on Nine Mile and Losher. And on Sunday afternoon, after 10 years, they had a mortgage burning ceremony. And I had the pleasure of being there and seeing the mortgage go up in flames as they paid off their loan. And they turned around and asked, now that we're free of this obligation, what else can we do for the city of Southfield? And a number of suggestions were made between myself, Congresswoman Lawrence, and several others. So, I'm really proud of this organization as they've done, they have five youth programs. And I first got affiliated with them back 35 years ago, maybe, or more, when they started the after-school tutoring program in Southfield, which has been very, very helpful to hundreds of Southfield kids. So, I want to congratulate Sigma Delta Theta and the Torch of Wisdom Foundation. I also mentioned that they have a building program. They're going to be, now that they're free of their mortgage debt, they're partnering with Lawrence Tech, and they are doing a planning, a remodeling of the building and various improvements. One of the things desperately needed there, the building does not have an elevator, and there are ADA issues that they plan to address. So, once again, congratulations to the city on the Kimmy Horn, and congratulations to the Torch of Wisdom on their success. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just before you, don't want you to get caused, it's Delta Sigma Theta.
What did I say?
Sigma Delta Theta.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You meant to say Delta.
You know, I am dyslexic. I have mild dyslexia.
It's okay. I just don't want you to get caused after. Let me, it's Delta Sigma Theta.
Oh, well, shame on me. I know better. Anyhow, Torch of Wisdom. Although somebody, I was telling somebody about it, and they said, oh, that's interesting. They do torture and wisdom? They didn't quite hear it. Anyhow, Torch of Wisdom.
All right, thank you. Administration?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just congratulate everyone involved with the Kimmy Horn concert. Very well executed. I know our internal bureaucracy sometimes frustrates those putting it together, but it is there for a reason, and we followed all of the rules and very successful execution there. And in addition to the mayor's comments, the media coverage on the event was excellent, from Friday's entertainment section in the Free Press to the Southfield Sun and Hit in the Right Time. And it's been a really exciting summer in Southfield when you look at all the activities that have happened. The concerts every other Friday, the Thursday bike rolls. It's just good to see people out and about again and taking advantage and things getting back to normalcy. And staff is to be congratulated on making that happen. It's been a very exciting summer. Just look at the events that were named just as we wrap down August. We still have more big events happening. And September, there'll be some exciting things happening at Lawrence Tech, from a drone show as well, another football season starting, the 90th anniversary of the university, as well as the inaugural of a new president there. So, it's an exciting time, and I see that energy rolling into mid-September, and it creates that sense of vibrancy. We'll have one more E to the Beat. We had our Corporate Cup Challenge. I'll have Ms. Freeman come back and give council a report on that. Having seen a couple of the events at Campus Marshes, I think our Corporate Cup Challenge really does Southfield proud. I think we have just as much involvement as what I saw at Campus Marshes pre-pandemic. So, I'm really pleased with that. That's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I forgot one thing. I meant to mention Michael Mannion and what Community Relations did as well. So, thank you for reminding me. We did get great publicity on the event. Fox and Channel 7, as well as a whole variety of online and traditional media coverage. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I have nothing further to add this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I have a couple things. First, I have my expense report up for approval tonight.
Yes. Councilman Cruz?
I'd like to move approval of the travel expense report for Sharika Hawkins to the International Association of Government Officials for clerks and treasurers.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the travel expense report for Sharika Hawkins for attending the International Association of Government Officials for Clerks and Treasurers. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Just wanted to share a couple things from that conference. One of the key components of the conference is how clerks and treasurers can use technology to better serve the residents. So, in using technology, they were trying to, taught us some different software that we can use that's fee-evasive for fees such as voter list or fees such as FOIA. So, any transactions that were less than $100 is software out there that is, that does fit into BSNA, that would not charge the purchaser any fees. So, I thought that that was very good to potentially take a look into that, especially with convenience now. Even with our birth records, a lot of, we have a lot of $20 transactions online. And if you cannot have that fee, that could be beneficial to individuals that don't come in. I had a young lady the other day that needed a birth certificate, needed to come in, and she just spoke about how it was just difficult getting a ride here. So, things that we don't often think about. So, I thought that was something that we can move forward with. And next, I will say that, Mr. Mayor, I had a lady call me, and she said she was able to find an outfit at the garage sale that we have for our Free Garage Sale Week on Saturday, and she wore it to the Kimmy Horn Festival. So, two-in-one, you know, garage sale. So, I think the community was all working together. Again, I want to thank Michael Mannion. We had a great turnout with our Garage Sale Week again. As we continue to move forward, we can, hopefully, that will even get bigger. And then, lastly, we did have an election a couple weeks ago. I want to thank my staff. We have been short-staffed, so I want to thank them for all of their hard work. We did get a question. We had roughly approximately 16,694 individuals that voted in this election. So, we're about 28% voter turnout. Would like to see that a little bit higher. That number will probably double for November easily. So, and then, lastly, this month is actually National Black Business Month. Started back in 2003, black entrepreneurship has been known to happen in this country since the early 1700s. And I just want to encourage all, because the city of Southfield is predominantly African-American community, to support a black-owned business before the end of the month, as we do celebrate National Black Business Month. Thank you.
Thank you. City treasurer, city planner, assessor, engineer? All right. We have nothing to schedule. Is there anything else to come before the council? All right, meeting is adjourned.